I'd like to call to order the Concord Township Zoning Commission meeting for Tuesday, September 1st, 2020. Before we get into the agenda, I would like to introduce all the members. Some of you are on the web and some of them are here. So let's start far left, that is Frank Schindler. And then, near left is Andrew Lingenfelder. To my right is Rich Peterson. And far right is, what's your name again? Heather, 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 I don't even know your last name, Heather Freeman. Yes, I do. Also, our recorder is Mindy Melton, she's here. We have legal counsel. Oh, I forgot, we have a member of the board that's on the telephone. Rich Ifalice, he's joining us on the telephone. I'd also like to congratulate him on a grandbaby. I don't know if it's a boy or girl.
It's a boy.
It's a boy, okay. Legal counsel is on the phone, Abigail Bell. And, good evening. And I think that's it for introductions. First on the agenda is a public hearing for zoning amendment application 0320-1 submitted by Ryland Inc. for the bunch of text amendments. And again, Heather has received an email indicating that they would like to postpone her table that public hearing for another month, I assume. So if I could please have a motion to table the public hearing for zoning amendment application 0320-1.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we table the public hearing for zoning amendment application number 0320-1 submitted by Ryland Inc. per the applicant's request.
Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Second. Do you want to call roll, or do we just go aye? All in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Oppose, same sign? Or nay? Okay. It is table. And since everybody else is doing it, I'm gonna do it too. Okay, second on the agenda is a site plan review, application number 41 submitted by Oregon Capital LLC for proposed medical office building located at 8003 Auburn Road. And the current parcel number is 08-A-020-0-00-010-0. And I'm sure all those numbers mean something, right? Okay, do we have the applicant here? Would you step up and state your name and your business?
Hi, how's everybody doing tonight?
Wonderful, honey.
Good. My name's Peter Joyce, I'm the owner of Oregon Capital. My wife is Dr. Tina Joyce, family physician. About 13 years ago, we opened up our practice in Concord, and we always wanted to own our own office building. So nine years, almost to the day, I was standing here to build our current building on 8007 Auburn, which is the same lot. And what we'd like to do is expand the services we're offering by putting up a four-unit office building across the parking lot, basically. That way, we can offer some additional services. We have an independent pharmacy who would like to move into the space. We have Quest Labs is interested in the space. The audiologist we currently have in our building right now is actually expanding beyond the space, and she wants to have some more, so she would move into the new building type of thing. And the idea is to lease the last bit of it to a specialist, probably. You know, it's about 5,800 square feet. We want to build it in the same architectural style as our current building. And what we do, if we get approval, we hope to break ground next spring and have it up and running before the snow flies next year.
Good for you.
So that's kind of the brief overview. I know that there are some questions on the staff report. Do you want me to go through those and address a few of them? Because I know there's a few that kind of pop out. There's some details we need to get into our plans that are missing. We have to work on those a little bit. But there is number eight on the zoning staff comments about the existing dumpster enclosure is missing required gate. I think when we originally built it, a gate wasn't required, so we'll put the gate up mount. There's also a suggestion of putting an additional dumpster pad. I don't think that's necessary. Our current enclosure is 10 by 10, and I think it would be sufficient enough to service both buildings. I don't know, I have a photo of the enclosure with the current garbage can in it, if you want me to show it to you.
No, that's all right.
All right. Perfect.
Well, let me ask you this, Peter. Is there anything on the list? Obviously, there's quite an extensive list in the staff recommendations, which is not typical, okay?
Okay.
But it's not unusual either, but it's... Is there anything on this list that they've highlighted that you're aware of that you're going to have difficulty meeting?
Well, probably the biggest one is the building color I picked out. What I'd like to do is have it blue with black shingles and white trim. So our current building's black shingle, white trim, and green.
And green?
It's green, yeah. It's kind of a... It's actually, it was the color of my grandparents' house. That was the inspiration behind it. And I saw a blue house that I thought looked really, really sharp. And I found a picture in certain teeth catalog of what I was trying to accomplish, and this is the siding and stuff. I don't know if I can, you guys can look at it and show and see if that's what I'd like to do with it. So it's got the black shingles, the white trim. We would have the lap siding, and then reverse gables would be the shake look to it. And I had originally gone with a black roof, because that's the current color, the black roof. Oh, that photo's got, I think it's like a dark gray, charcoal gray. I think that looks even better. I kind of like to go with that. So I think that's probably, that's the one thing that stands out to me, unless there's something else that you guys see in the notes.
Well, Heather, do you want to say anything about that, since it's a staff comment? Are we gonna... The blue?
Yeah, I'm not sure the digital representation we gave her didn't, doesn't look as good. And then I know when I printed it out, the color was even a little bit...
Yeah, that's always difficult with...
Exactly. So I found that the other day, and I'm like, that's what I was going for, so...
Well, I think it would be up to this board to determine whether or not that meets the intent of the regulation that someone cited there, as far as, you know, we're kind of stuck between the design review portion of it. So it determines the board that we'll have to go separately, one location at a time, decide if we want to help together. So... Roof color, you're saying, I'm sorry.
I actually like the roof color in that photo better, so... So I like, so that looks to me, it's more dark gray than black, and I think that looks a little better than the black.
What is the existing building?
Existing buildings, black. And then, I don't know, if you want, I got the color chip, the certainty thing, if that's necessary or not.
Any other showstoppers that you...
Not that I'm aware of. I think that was the big one. I just covered up my notes.
Well, let's get your feelings on that.
Okay.
If we were to be okay with everything but your color choice, I mean, is that a showstopper for you? I mean, is that something you're really gonna kind of pick your heels in on, or...
It would not be a showstopper, but here's what I found, is when I, when someone calls our office and we say, "We're the green office building," they know exactly where we're at. And I would like to be able to do that with the current building. You know, I could pick out a nice gray, or a tan, or something like that, probably go with a gray look, but I prefer the blue if possible.
Personally, as long as the building is a nice building and it's attractive architecturally, you know, unless we're talking pink with purple polka dots, I'm really not going to get caught up, you know, I'm not gonna get myself wrapped around the axle over green versus blue.
Gotcha.
Okay, as long as it's a tasteful situation. But we'll, you know, we'll obviously discuss that when we get...
I have some photos of my current building, if you want, on my phone, I can pull them up if you want, and imagine that blue, if that would be helpful for you.
No, we're good.
Okay.
How about number one, under the design standards? The north wall does not carry the same design features?
Oh, yes. So there's a base of stone on the front of the building, we'll wrap that all the way around. And then, what I think we'll do is lap siding around the building, and then we'll put the shake in reverse gables. And there's a couple eaves where the main entrances are. I'd like to put the shake next to the entrances also, where it's indented into the building, if that makes sense. So I think it's the second to last page that you guys have, A102. At least it was the second to last one on mine. This is, that's the elevations for the building.
The south and north, so...
Yeah, so the north elevation, we'd put the stone, we'd wrap the stone around the base.
All right.
And then you see the lap siding there. And then if you look at, let's say, the south elevation, you'll have the lap siding on that side as well, and then just the shake up under the reverse gables there. The triangles, I think they're reverse gables. I'm not an architect by trade, or a general contractor.
Any other items on the utilities? Water?
Um, so, no, no water issues or power. There is some confusion with the Lake County Sew and Water District, though. They show the design, they have their plans a little different than what we show. They show the runoff from our property while going into the ponds in front of it. Those are outdated plans. They actually made us revise them, so none of the water on our property would go into our runoff ponds. We were supposed to divert it directly into the ditches. We gave them those revised plans, but they lost a copy of them. They came back and came after us about two years ago to make changes. We dug them out, sent them a photo of the revised drawings that they had approved, signed off on, and sent them a photo, and we had never heard back from them again. So I guess we'll have to do this, probably go into our files, dig out the final approval drawings they did, and have, because basically, the guy who was, I think there's someone new, since I've done this last time, the guy basically said, "Our ponds would be humongous if we had the runoff from all the properties around us," you know? So they had us design it just to catch the build off, the runoff from the buildings and the parking lot. The, we, and the idea was, when we did the first building, is we actually put the pad in for the second building and the retention pond. Figured why we had the bulldozers in there, eat the cost, and do it. We're gonna have to do a little rejiggering on them, because I'm putting in a slightly bigger building. So we're gonna make the retention pond a little bit bigger on the side that's got the new building on it, and shift the building back a few feet away from the street to allow for that.
What is, on page, on sheet C5, you have a vehicle refueling tank with dyke.
I'm thinking that's for the construction guys. Would be, I think that's, yeah, that, that's just for, we're not gonna have any, I think that's just for, like, there's cement mixers or whatnot.
C5.
C5, okay.
Yeah, I think, I think those are the, I'm sorry?
Right next to the retention.
Yeah, yeah.
Gotcha, okay.
Yeah, that's just for the construction. That's nothing permanent.
But there's enough room in the back and the east side of the lot to take all this water?
On the, on the...
You're saying both the existing building and the new building are gonna flow to the east?
They're gonna flow into the two retention ponds there. So how it's actually designed is, the retention pond would be on the south side of the property, collects all the water, and then the retention pond on the north side actually catches the overflow from that retention pond and equals it up. And then, and then from that second retention pond is where it gets slowly let out into the ditches.
Okay, you have an emergency spillway. Has that ever been utilized?
Not even close.
I didn't think so.
Not even close.
Passed it, and they both look pretty dry.
Yeah, as a matter of fact, until we had the rain, you could almost walk into the second pond, basically. Into, I'm assuming it'll be a little bit fuller with two buildings and a little bit additional parking lot now, but they've, yeah, never even come close to even the overflow that's in, below the emergency spillway, you know? Hasn't even come close to coming over the top on that.
Yeah, but you're also gonna be doubling the amount of impervious surfaces.
Yeah, exactly, but...
So I'm sure that's gonna have some impact.
It will be, and that's, and one of the things we'll be doing is expanding that, the north side retention pond will be bigger. So assuming this, they did the proper calculations to figure that part out.
In looking over these plans, I looked at the landscape plan and then also C1. And some of the islands don't match up in size.
That is, that's one of the things that I have to get rectified that's on the list.
To make everything match.
Yes, exactly. So basically, we're kind of trying to, it's almost a mirror image of what we currently have. So right now, we have three exterior lamp posts for the property, kind of on each corner of the building. New building will do four, because it's gonna have a back parking lot as well, kind of on each corner of the building as well. And they're 12-foot tall. Brand, or the kind that we have, it's made by Melmore, Nevada, Texas. They don't carry this line anymore that we currently have, but they have stuff that's very similar. They do have the same kind of plastic cap, just the base will pull a little bit different.
Frank, do you have any questions?
Uh, no.
Rich on the phone?
So, forgive me if, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, I'm on, I'm on the other end. Forgive me if I missed something through the sound, it wasn't quite totally, I could hopefully hear everything, but my third, I just said, just a comment to the staff. I thought the new comments were very, quite thorough, but very thorough in less than, what we like, it's covered everything, I must say. My only comment that I think to the applicant was related to the drainage. So it looks like the pre-existing condition was for the drainage that does travel north and then, and then westwardly along the north, we probably went to Auburn Road. The store management department is giving something different, so it looks like that has to be reconciled, because I don't think the drainage could be accommodated any other way, it can't get into the basin very easily. But just a compliment to the ignorance of the renewed comments by the staff. That's all I can do.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Peterson?
I see nothing of concern.
Andy, anything else?
No, no, I just, as long as, as long as the applicant is confident that they'll be able to meet with all the comments and the recommendations, I wouldn't see, I don't see any other issues. It's nice to see people expand and...
We're trying. I built in the middle of the last recession, so I figured what the heck, try again.
Fine, go do it again.
During the pandemic.
Made for some interesting comparisons from the bank and the financial aspect, I have to say.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. One of the, one of the items the staff was recommending, and it sounded like they feel like they do, like the additional dumpster location.
Yes.
So if you're not going to do that, then, you know, that was the recommendation, that was more relevant.
Okay.
If you're intending to do that, that would be on approval.
Okay.
Just keep in mind, you always have future to do.
Well, I...
It seems like you have an area to accommodate that, because you're in the new building, so...
Gotcha. I think...
You really have one down the line, should decide.
The goal is, is ultimately, we'd like to put one more building on the back of the property. At that point in time, we probably have to address another dumpster area for the third building. I think at this point in time, we're okay with just the one area.
Okay, so we go a green building, a blue building, and what's the third one?
Quite honestly, there's this house, I don't know, in Little Mountain Development, in Little Mountain. So, do you guys play golf? All right, so, hold on a second, I gotta do 10, 11, 12. 14's the bar three, right? You're hitting straight at the road. There is a red house there. That, it looks really sharp, it's got nice white trim on it, and I, and I think it looks cool. It's an idea I've been passing, I've been floating around in my head. I think it would make for like a beautiful yoga studio on the second floor with some big windows and white trim, so we have some pine trees up on the right end. I think it would look good. So those are, that's kind of, that's a little down the road, yeah, but we'll cross separate.
Don't fall in love with that idea.
I won't. I won't.
Okay, hearing no other comments.
Now, as in my understanding, we're going to vote on the site plan?
Site plan only, yes.
And then have a discussion on the design review?
Yes.
So we're gonna, we'll do the...
Should be much shorter.
Right, the two separate, two separate...
Yes, two separate issues. So...
Mr. Chairman, I will make a motion that we accept the site plan review application number 41 with the conditional approval based on the 17 points that the, that the staff has made. 16 has A through, point number 16 has A through K, and number 17 has A through E on the recommendations. So I make, I think a, I make a motion that we accept the application, the site plan review application with the condition, with the conditions that are listed on the staff report.
Do I hear a second? I second. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Oppose? Say nay? Okay. Site plan review is conditionally approved, as noted. Okay, moving on. We now have the design review application number 41 for the same building. And this one gives us the interior layout and the elevations with the blue, and then the other elevations. And I think the comments still stand as to what we had in the site plan. So any comments from the board?
Well, as far as the color goes, I actually like the blue in the brochure, as opposed to the blue on the drawing, but I think it's very attractive, subtle and attractive color combination.
Okay.
Heather, let me ask you a question. How much of a problem does that create for us moving forward? If we have specific wording or specific verbiage in the zoning resolution that you would bring this out, and it's not in compliance, is there, is there anything that you can be concerned about in allowing the applicant to change the color to something else, as long as it's, I mean, would you be okay with that? Or is that, do you think that causes an issue that could be opening up a Pandora's box for us at some point in time down the road?
Well, I think this board's job is to determine whether or not you feel like the blue color that is shown to you this evening meets the intent of that regulation. You really can't deviate from that regulation if we're changing the regulation.
Actually, it's low reflected, it's muted, but it's just not earth tone, but I don't see a problem with that personally. I think it's a nice subtle blue, it's not a bright blue.
Well, I don't have a problem with it either, Rich. I just, all I'm asking is, is this, are we...
I don't think that we're excluding any blue shades, you know? There are, and I'm not an architect either, and I don't know if Rich wants to chime in on this at all, but there are blue colors, you know, in the earth, so...
Right. But my question is, my concern, and it's, and it's not, I'm not deep concerned, but it's a concern nonetheless, that if we do not adhere to the, you know, to the requirement and allowing, allow this to happen, you know, is that causing an issue moving forward, or is it just, it's really up to our discretion anyway? You know, if we find it tasteful, then we can go ahead and make that modification, or, you know?
Well, and, 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 Mr. Joyce, this blue that you're showing us here in the book is not exactly what, the way it looks on the...
No, exactly, yeah. As a matter of fact, I had originally had a slightly different blue from a different company, and when I read your comments, I kind of, I reached out further and looked for some other things. And then when I stumbled across this, and this was kind of like, this is, this is what I liked, and what I was shooting for, so...
And you had like a sample of it there or something?
I do, yeah. So I got the blue, the trim, and a black shutter, if you want. It's looking like that.
I mean, blue is kind of a western reserve color.
Sure. Well, I'm, I'm not, no, I'm, I am not opposed at all in any way, shape, or form. My, my concern is just procedural.
I'm gonna let you see what I'm getting at here.
Well, would we have to go to a zoning amendment then?
It's like a midnight blue. I'm trying to show Rich through the camera here.
Be sure.
It's not the best, this whole COVID thing. So it is more of a, a midnight blue here, much darker muted than, than what's depicted in the, in the, as I'd be happy to show this to you when you're back in town, too, Rich. I'll pass it on. Sure. Rich is having a little bit of trouble right now, I think, just picked up three back up, so. But, Andy, you know, your question, I, I don't think you're setting any kind of precedent. I think, you know, to get close to those samples, and feel like that can stand time, you know, because these are project by project. Um, if it was some bright.
Green, yeah.
More like I shown in the pictures, you know, whatever, that would be, yes.
Right.
Really a big scratch.
That, that was, that's really my only, that's my only issue. I, I don't really, I don't have a problem with it, but I just wanted to make sure we weren't opening the door for some issues in the future.
Thank you.
So, okay. So on that, we only have, what, we only have.
Three.
Three bullet points.
Yes.
On the design review, and, uh, aside from the color, which I think, it seems like we might be in agreement on that, so I don't think that's gonna be an issue. Uh, the light poles, proposed light poles, are you okay with that, too, Peter?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I've got, um, I brought a catalog, and I can show you similar to what we have, if you'd like, um, 'cause I, I took a photo of my lamp post here.
And the north wall issue, you're.
The north wall, we're just gonna wrap the stone around it, so it's uniform.
Okay.
Quite honestly, that was an oversight on our part, 'cause that's what our current building currently has, so. Okay.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
Uh, the only comment, getting back to the paint, was, they say it should be matted, and according to what he showed us in the catalog, it looks matted to me, that he's chosen, so I don't see that as being an issue personally.
Okay. Andy?
I've made my comments.
Okay.
I'm good.
Rich is good. Rich on the phone?
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman, but, uh, pretty much everything that was said there is, I could not hear much of it. I apologize.
Could it be the mask? No, ba- basically, what we said was, if you look at the staff, the staff comments on the design review, uh, Mr. Joyce is pretty well amenable to all of them, except for the blue, and we think we've solved that.
Yep.
Or resolved it. So they look okay. So I looked for a motion to approve the, uh, design review application number 41, uh, with the, uh, staff, with the staff recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we conditionally approve the design review application number 41, as noted with the three changes, including the blue color.
I'll second.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? None. Okay. You are approved, conditionally approved.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate your time, and we appreciate you coming in to share your thoughts with us.
No problem. Do you want me to write that stuff down for you, or are you just, uh? Sure. I can, if you'd like me to, oh, here. All right, gentlemen, you have a wonderful evening, appreciate it.
Thank you, Ms. Joyce.
And ladies, I should say also, thank you. Take care.
Next on the agenda is the election of a vice chair. Do I have any nominations?
Mr. Chairman, I nominate Andy Linkenfelder for vice chairman.
I'll second it. Do we, yeah, I'll second that. Anybody else? None? Rich on the phone?
Uh, are you asking for nominations?
Yes.
None, none, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Uh, we have Andy Linkenfelder as a nomination for a vice chair. All those in favor, or no, wait, do I have to close the nominations?
You'll need somebody to make a motion.
Do you have to make somebody make a motion?
Yeah. You don't need to close an election.
Okay. Make a motion that we.
We need somebody to make a motion. I can't make it, because I.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we'll close the nomination.
Okay. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Now. Nomination's being closed. Only one nominee is there. Do I have a motion that we accept, Andy?
Mr. Chairman, I, I still move that we accept Andy Linkenfelder as vice chair.
I'll second that. All those in favor?
Right.
Aye.
Aye.
I'll abstain.
You were next in line, anyway.
I know.
Oh, is that right? Okay. In, in a rotation. All right, Andy is our vice chair. Approval of minutes for the July 7th zoning commission meeting?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we accept the, uh, minutes as presented.
I'll second that motion.
All those in favor of appro.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Rich? Pardon?
You abstained.
Abstained? Okay. Meeting minutes are approved for the July 7th meeting. Correspondents' report for zoning commission members, starting with Rich on the phone?
I'm Mr. Richard, Rich.
Okay. Rich, here?
No, I had no correspondence, Mr. Chairman.
Andy?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I was approached by a neighbor that's in my development with regards to, um, uh, accessory buildings, and, um, I provided him with, uh, a, a copy of the section of the zoning, you know, the zoning resolution that covers the, uh, the designated, uh, area that he lives in, so that he could review it, so that he understood what the, uh, what his obligations were, and what the, what the rules and regulations were with regards to, uh, accessory buildings. So, that was it for me, though, that was the only thing I dealt with.
Okay. Wasn't Morgan, was it?
No, no.
Okay, all right. Frank?
Uh, no, it's Jared.
And, and I had none also. Audience participation is next. Hello, audience.
Could be on the phone, right?
Yeah, they, well, only for the public hearing. I, no. Nobody else is on the phone? I guess we have no audience participation.
This is what I was talking about.
Next meeting for the zoning commission is October 6th, 2020.
Wow.
October already.
Holy smokes.
All right. With that, do I hear a motion that we adjourn?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion, we adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Meeting is adjourned.
Nice job.